Okay, welcome all to the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals Hearing for Tuesday, March 21st, 2016. Seven o'clock, we're opening the hearing. This is the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass., This hearing is a continuation of the hearing we held on March 7th, 2017, relative to a comprehensive permit application for the property located at 93, 97 Route 28 in West Harwich, Assessors Map Number 10, Parcels Number W-3B and W-5. I would ask the board members to introduce themselves, please.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hederstedt.
Dave Ryer.
John Burke.
Al Donahue.
Frank O'Prevent.
And Shay was the lady secretary.
I'll ask our clerk, Mr. Burke, to call the case, please.
Case number 2017-04, Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc. By its attorney, Warren H. Brody, has made application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23 and 760 CMR 56, to create an eight-lot subdivision to provide six new, single-family affordable homes, two market-rate lots, and a cul-de-sac. The property is located at 93 and 97 Route 28, Harwich, Assessors Map 10, Parcels W-3B and W-5, and it is located in the RL zoning district. There is included in the record a large volume of correspondence from various departments and abutists. It is normally the custom of this board to read into the record all of this, however, due to the large volume of this material, which is now posted on our website, has been provided to the applicant, and will be available to anyone else, the members of the public who would like to see it. We will not read the entire record verbatim in. However, there is a substantial amount of comment. All board members have copies of this and have digested that. And that's the record, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like to do a few, or make a few introductory remarks. I don't normally do this, but we don't normally have a 40B, and I think there's a lot of confusion about it and how this board must proceed under a 40B application. So I'm just going to go through this. It's fairly brief. Massachusetts General Law Act 40B, it's also known as the Comprehensive Permit Law, that was adopted by the Massachusetts Legislature to address the shortage of low and moderate-income housing in Massachusetts and to reduce the regulatory barriers that impede the development of such housing. Under Chapter 40B, the Board of Appeals, this board acts on behalf of all other local boards. All the other local boards review the application, and they have furnished us any comments they had. The applicant, Habitat for Humanity, must still comply with all federal and state laws and regulations, such as the Wetlands Protection Act and the building codes. Pursuant to 760 CMR 56, which the Massachusetts Legislature adopted to implement Chapter 40B, the Board of Appeals may dispose of a 40B application in one of three ways. One, it may approve a comprehensive permit on the terms and conditions set forth in the application without change. Two, it may approve a comprehensive permit with conditions, as long as such conditions are consistent with local needs and they do not make the project uneconomic. Three, it may deny a comprehensive permit if not consistent with local needs if the Board of Appeals finds that there are no conditions which adequately address local concerns. Under these regulations, "local concern" means the need to protect the health or safety of the occupants of a proposed project or of the residents of the community, to protect the natural environment, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings and municipal and regional planning, or to preserve open spaces. "Consistent with local needs" means either, one, the state affordable income housing standards have been met, Harwich has not met these, I'm sure you're aware of that, or, two, any local requirements imposed on a project are reasonable in view of the regional need for affordable housing and are applied as equally as possible to both affordable and not affordable housing. An "uneconomic condition" is one that reduces the number of units for reasons other than evidence of local concerns, such as design, engineering, or environmental deficiencies that directly result from the impact of a project on a particular site. Okay, just a word about the protocol, which we are going to generally follow tonight. The applicant will come up in a moment and present its application. Then the board is going to provide their questions, their comments. Then we will have the public provide any comments or questions. When I recognize a member of the public, you raise your hand if you would, please. I'd like you to come over to the podium and the microphone, speak into it, state your name and your address for our record. Then we'll have the applicant make any final comments. The board will make any final comments, and then we will either continue or close the hearing, depending on where we're at, at the end of the evening. In our legal notice, we have noted that we have a second continuation meeting, which will be held on Thursday, March 23rd, 2017, here in this room at seven, so that's two nights from now. Given that, we will go forward tonight until 10:00 PM. I think that's a reasonable time to break tonight. We'll have three hours, and we'll see where we're at. I think that's all I have, so I will ask the applicant to come forward and present their petition, please. Oh, just one more thing. The voting members tonight will be our five regular members, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, me, Mr. Burke, and Mr. Prevent.
Thank you very much, members of the board. My name is Warren Brody. I'm an attorney practicing in Falmouth, Massachusetts. I am also a board member on Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc. With me tonight are various people, Ricky Goldsmith, the Executive Director of Habitat, is here, as is, as are representatives of Hetch, the Harwich Ecumenical Council for Housing, and other supporters of our project in Harwich. With me on my right is Dan Ojala of Down Cape Engineering, who is the engineer for the project, and on my left, Lee Darazola, who is Habitat's consultant for land acquisition and permitting. The hearing today, as we know, is a hearing on an application for a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B. Habitat for Humanity proposes to develop the back portion of the properties at 93 and 97 Main Street in West Harwich. Habitat is proposing six affordable homes and a cul-de-sac access road to come off the northwest corner of the site. The new subdivision would also create smaller lots for the existing structures on 93 and 97 Main Street, for a total of eight lots. Hetch, the local Harwich nonprofit, currently owns the property. Originally, the intent of Hetch was to construct on the premises a 20-unit rental development. That plan has changed. Hetch and Habitat have entered into a development agreement where Habitat will subdivide the property, as indicated, take title to the rear portion in the cul-de-sac area, while Hetch will maintain ownership of the front structures, which will now be on smaller lots. These front lots will not have affordable deed restrictions. Hetch has issued an RFP, that is, a request for proposal, for a buyer for the home and barn on 97 Main Street, also known as the Chase Home, and an RFP requirement included the preservation of the front exterior facades of the two structures on the lot at 97 Main Street. Hetch is also under agreement, as we understand it, to sell the home on 93 Main Street. Both of the septic systems, the existing septic systems for those properties, will need to be relocated so that they are contained within the newly created lots. All this is shown on the site plan, which is to my left. The new systems there will be fully Title V compliant. Also, a portion of the structure on 93 Main Street will need to be demolished in order to build the cul-de-sac, but the part that will be demolished will be compensated for by building or reconstructing a structure on the rear of that building. The parking for the home on 93 will also be changed so that it comes off the cul-de-sac instead of coming directly off Route 28, which we believe is an improvement. As far as the legal particulars go, the applicant is Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc. We are a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation and an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International, which is a recognized 501(c)(3) entity. You can find certification of that in our application at Exhibit R. The site, that is to say, Parcels W-5 and W-3B on Assessors Map 10 are in an RH1 zoning district. I believe they're also in a CH1 district, which is not relevant to this proceeding. Some parts of the site are within the FEMA flood zone AE, but the proposed Habitat homes will be cited so that all structures will be in a Zone X, that is, not in the flood plain. Therefore, these houses will not have any requirement for flood insurance. There has been some discussion regarding the placement of septic systems within the flood plain. We have our engineer here tonight, who can speak directly and in more detail on this topic, but simply put, there is no environmental danger presented by such placement, and there are no regulations regarding septic systems in a flood plain. Our systems fully comply with Title V, and these will be no exceptions. Habitat has filed with the Harwich Conservation Commission for a request for determination of applicability, and will submit these materials to the zoning board. We anticipate that we'll have a conservation hearing after the ZBA process. Included with our application at Tab are various maps and photographs that may help us understand that. Habitat proposes to build our cul-de-sac on the westernmost edge of the property. This will require approval from our westing-abutter neighbor, who is the owner of the property at 87 Main Street. We have been working collaboratively with this neighbor and expect to have a written agreement fairly soon. It will result in a small amount of paving in front of her property at 87, and we will grant the neighbor rights in a portion of our cul-de-sac so she can access her property from the cul-de-sac rather than from Route 28. And we feel this is a beneficial approach to traffic planning and works well for all involved. It also means that the existing utility pole, which is in front of the dwelling at 93 Main Street, would not need to be relocated. We have worked with a traffic consultant, who has looked at this project and provided a transportation impact assessment, which you will find at Exhibit V. This includes some recommendations, all of which we will implement. You can find them on Page 3 of Exhibit V. There are five recommendations, which we will follow, but the main conclusion is that this project can be accommodated within the confines of the existing transportation infrastructure. There is no municipal sewer, at least not at this point, so the homes will require private on-site sewage disposal systems. The plumbing will be designed in the Habitat homes so that there are alternate outflows to the front of the homes in anticipation of future sewer-ing in Main Street and to make future sewer hookup simpler and more affordable to the homeowners. The homes will have town water, and we will have a homeowners association with rules, including rules that will specifically prohibit the installation of private wells for irrigation on these six affordable lots, as that is a condition of the Board of Health, that there be no irrigation wells dug on those lots. While there is some past documented water contamination in the vicinity, one of the first things Habitat did in getting involved in this project was to hire an engineering consulting firm to perform environmental testing, to ensure that there's no contamination that will have any impact on this site. And I'd recommend that you look at Exhibit W for the report of Bennett Environmental Associates, including their findings. Architecture. The six Habitat homes will have a variety of architectural styles. There will be three, excuse me, two three-bedroom capes, two three-bedroom ranches, and two two-bedroom ranches. The capes will have patios or decks, and the ranches will have a front farmer's porch. You can look at Exhibit O for our preliminary architectural plans. We construct generally to the standard of visitability, but the ranch homes can also be built to be fully compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act if the selected purchaser family needs accommodations. Habitat homes score advantageously on the HERS rating system, the Home Energy Rating System. Our insulation meets and exceeds code standards, and we couple that high efficiency with air-source heat pumps. We use sustainable and efficient building materials and practices whenever practical. Not only does this make our homes greener, but it helps our buyer families with ongoing affordability, as utility costs are lowered. And we have cited our homes in this development so that they will be able to use solar panels. We have installed solar panels on many of our projects, and it's a tremendous boon for the homeowners. We cannot commit to doing so because we haven't secured funding yet in this particular case, but we have some very strong partners in the solar field, and including a great program through the Cape Light Compact. And it is our hope to be able to include solar panels as part of this project. This is a friendly B, friendly, excuse me, friendly 40B project, that is. It has the endorsement of the Board of Selectmen. It also has received funding from the Harwich Housing Trust for both land acquisition and predevelopment, and the project has been reviewed and approved by both the Harwich Housing Committee and the Board of Selectmen. We have applied for approval as a local initiative project, as administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development. That application was endorsed by both the Board of Selectmen and the Harwich Housing Committee. And the LIP, they call it a local initiative project or LIP application, was approved by DHCD, which issued a project eligibility letter, which is a central document here. You may find it at Tab L, dated February 1st, 2017. That project eligibility letter establishes many things, that the site is appropriate for the project, that the design is appropriate for the project, and that the project appears to be financially feasible, based upon the pro formas that we submitted and that were reviewed by DHCD. All of the homes will meet or exceed the DHCD LIP standards in terms of square footage and other features. In addition to approval by the subsidizing agency, Habitat is required to demonstrate that this development is consistent with local needs, which frankly, as Chairman Ryer expressed, is really just a function of the percentage of affordable housing in the town. And as of the latest subsidized housing inventory, which is in December of 2014, Harwich had 333 units of affordable housing out of its 6,121 year-round units, or 5.4 percent. You can look at subsidized housing inventory, excuse me, at Exhibit X. And also at Exhibit X is a list of those communities with housing production plans that have met their numerical goals this year, and unfortunately, Harwich is not on that list. And as we discussed, the threshold for a 40B application is 10 percent affordable housing inventory. As Harwich is under that 10 percent, the proposed development is presumed by the statute and the regulations to be consistent with local needs. In the application at Exhibit Z, you will find a list of the waivers that we are requesting. They include subdivision regulations. The reason for that is, although this is not a planning board, you do, in effect, sit as a planning board when reviewing this application, and you have the power to waive the subdivision regulations that would normally be within the purview of the planning board. We are also seeking relief from various portions of the zoning bylaws, as you can see from the list, including, of course, the size regulations. Assuming the comprehensive permit is issued, Habitat will proceed to select purchasers for each unit in accordance with our established procedures, at a sale price that is consistent with DHCD's LIP program and affirmative fair marketing requirements. If you look at Exhibit T, you will see details of our pricing model. And Exhibit U, details our marketing and lottery process. Habitat's goal is to select families whose income is no more than 60 to 65 percent of the median income of Barnstable County and who otherwise meet Habitat selection criteria, which are extensive. The ultimate selection is done by a lottery approved by DHCD. And in that lottery, we will request DHCD to approve a preference in the lottery for local residents. We don't control that. We ask for that preference, and we generally expect to receive it. Once the permit is issued, we will proceed without unnecessary delay to construct the houses, and once they are constructed, to convey them to eligible purchasers. Our purchasers, under the Habitat model, are required to contribute sweat equity, which means each adult member of the family must contribute 250 hours of work on this project or related project. This serves to promote the homeowner's education as to home construction and maintenance, and Habitat also provides homebuyer education for all of our buyers. Each home will be subject to an affordable housing restriction rider, approved by DHCD, that will ensure that the units will be affordable in perpetuity and also included in the subsidized housing inventory. The houses to be constructed will qualify for LEED, that is, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Standards, although Habitat does not intend to apply for formal LEED certification for cost reasons. Houses also qualify for the Energy Star Home Energy Rating Service, which, as I understand, it does performance assessments, suggesting improvements and performing safety checks and the like. Habitat partners with our communities, seeking donations of materials, professional services, and labor. We strive to make our homes welcome and to be good neighbors. Habitat works to create a collaborative spirit where the whole community can be actively involved in helping to address the affordable housing problem on Cape Cod. With quality, desirable, single-family homes priced affordably, Habitat for Humanity creates homeownership opportunities for families at income levels that are not served by other programs. We are an experienced developer and continuous existence since our founding as an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International in 1988. We have several projects underway or recently completed, including seven homes in Harwich on Oak Street, one home in Eastham, two in Barnstable, two in Mashpee, under construction, four in Chatham under construction, and six, excuse me, six in Yarmouth under construction. We are starting infrastructure, we have started infrastructure, on a 14-home neighborhood in Brewster, and also three homes in Truro and four additional ones in Barnstable. We have, so far, built and sold 103 homes on the Cape. We have another 25 in the pipeline in various stages of permitting and construction or infrastructure work, and another 35 or 40 in feasibility studies and predevelopment. And we hope soon to include these Harwich homes in our under instruction category. Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod works in partnership with families in need to build homes, hope, lives, and community. And with that, I welcome your questions, and if I can't answer them, I will direct them to those who hopefully can.
All right, thank you, Attorney Brody. We'll open it up to the board now. Ms. Muller?
I wonder if you could review for us the history of the Chase House over the last few years, how you came to be an owner, and how it comes to be, I think, for sale?
We are not an owner of that. That is still owned by Hetch.
That's owned by Hetch?
Yes.
Okay.
And perhaps, enough to be appropriate for Attorney Singer. Attorney Singer of Hetch is here. Perhaps he could address that.
Good evening. For the record, Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney in Dennisport. I here, as Attorney Brody said, on behalf of Hetch. Hetch owns all of the land that you see on the plan right now. It is two lots, with 93, the house on the left, the land goes all the way back, and then there's a lot on the right, which is 97, which is the Chase property that you mentioned. Hetch has owned it for a number of years. At one point, the ranch house was their offices. They have tenants in the two buildings. Those are tenants who are going to be staying. Hetch has entered into an agreement partnering with Habitat, as Attorney Brody said, to create the subdivision, but they, Hetch, until they sell the, once the subdivision is done, Hetch will retain ownership of the two houses, the Chase House being one of them, and they ultimately will have an agreement to sell that. The Chase House, as to what was mentioned about the preservation of the facade of that, a number of years ago, Hetch went through the process when they were working on the development to, they went through the demolition-delay process in the town of Harwich. That period passed. The house, the Chase House, the barn, this was now a year or two ago, stood at a point where they could be demolished as part of a redevelopment, whether, this is before Habitat was on the scene. There was concern raised by some about, you know, the Chase House and about trying to preserve it. Hetch, and Don Howell from the Hetch Board is here, he was instrumental in reaching out and offering that as part of a 40B redevelopment, that they would agree to voluntarily place a historic preservation restriction on the front-facing facades of both the barn and the Chase House. That would be a document that ultimately would be recorded and would run in perpetuity. And that was offered by Hetch and the owner, to, as the owner, to be responsive to questions and comments that had come up about the status of the buildings. I hope that answers your question as to how, what is there is there, and how the question of the house came to be.
Front-facing facade, meaning a subsequent owner could make all kinds of other modifications to the property?
The, I'm not an expert in historic preservation. I have worked with these agreements. Very often, historic preservation agreements are protecting whatever they are protecting, whether it's a piece of a house to a whole house. There is no, to my knowledge, there is no intent to change the box of the structures. There is a, Hetch does have an interested party who would like to purchase both of the houses, meaning 93 and 97, retain the Hetch tenants who are in there, and as part of the, the house needs a lot of work. And I think that if you were, have been following along with any, during the demolition-delay process and the reviews and the structural analyses, the house, the house needs, and the barn needs a lot of work. This particular individual has expressed an intent to perform that work, and that would be, you know, part of his going forward after, if, and when. would be, you know, part of his going forward after, if and when the comprehensive permit is issued, the subdivision's created, and those houses are then sold on the individual lots.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I might just quickly add, because I did mention it before, our evidence of site control, which is part of the application, is that Exhibit P, that is a purchase and sale agreement between Habitat and Hetch. Otherwise, we wouldn't have standing to be here today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
A few additions to the history of this, and Hetch, folks, please step in, Lida Arizola for Habitat for Humanity. This parcel was originally purchased by Hetch for affordable housing. I don't have the date, Andrew may have that. It was purchased, that was when Bob Murray was spearheading Hetch, and it was purchased to be a rental development. Some, there's some change in the landscape of affordable housing funding, some changes in Hetch organizationally, and comments from the community. The original twenty, I think there may have been even a twenty-four-unit development that was rental development that was provided, so responsive to the community concerns about the Hetch House, I'm sorry, the Chase House, thank you, Warren. Hetch had the properties on the market looking for a buyer, they had determined with Bob Murray's passing and changes in their organization that they couldn't, they did not want to go forward with a rental development. They tried to sell the properties, they were listed on the MLS, I believe, for over a year, and at that point, Hetch approached us, and what we had hoped and thought was a very collaborative, cooperative idea, being able to not demolish the Chase home, but have some preservation there, keep to some of Bob Murray's intent to develop affordable housing in back, and at the same time, Hetch enabled Hetch to sell the property. So we came into this partnering with Hetch and feeling it was a win for Habitat to create more, another Habitat neighborhood, a win for Hetch as they no longer wanted to own, that wasn't part of their organizational mission. And we thought, from the historic preservation standpoint, and again, we're not historic preservation experts and don't mean to take that position, but we looked at this as it's not getting demolished.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Not at this time, thank you.
Mr. Hederstedt?
I would like to continue the discussion on the Chase House, please. I note that you've requested a waiver, and I don't think that's applicable. Can I ask why you have requested a waiver to, I can find it here, the Harwich, Chapter one-thirty-one, historic preservation?
At some point, we are overzealous with our waivers. We feel it is better to get all the concepts on the table for a fruitful discussion. Local boards know their bylaws very well. We put that in there, I did not see anything, there's already been the demolition-delay application, that year has run, not that anyone involved in this project wants to, but the home could be demolished?
The reason I asked is because I pulled, I pulled the reg.
Okay.
And the reg clearly states that, and I'll quote it here, "Historic structures or maids' quarters may not be enlarged or altered in any way which increases the degree of nonconformity." However, the increase in the degree of nonconformity would, would, an example of increase in such a nonconformity would be to enclose above or below a nonconforming deck. Not a footprint, but not a footprint increase. Addition above or below nonconforming portions of enclosed floors shall not constitute an increase in the degree of nonconformity, which brings up another issue. The other issue is, there was a statement in your, in your waiver, and it's in the general section, that says these lots seven and eights are considered pre-existing nonconforming. There's no way I could tell if I was in the heart of the ZBA and I'm sitting here and somebody comes in front of me right now and says it's nonconforming, there's no way I know unless I have a plot plan or a lot plan, which we don't have. So I'm, I'm requesting, and the board will have to support me or make some other arrangements, but I would think we should have a lot plan or plot plans for both of those places, so we know the extent of nonconformity that exists. So when they come in front of us at some later date, we've got it in, 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 in front of us. So those are the two issues I have right now. I can continue if you'd want me to in other areas, if it's all right? Okay. There is a statement in here that says you're going to use high-efficiency air-source heat pumps. Now, I understand the efficiency of these, and I think that's fantastic, but from what I understand, these are probably normal, commercial heat pumps that you'd use on any natu, any home on Cape Cod. And if that's true, when you, at least from my knowledge, when you get below forty degrees Fahrenheit, you start losing efficiency. When you get to around five, they don't work. So my first question is, what's your backup? What kind of backup do we have in each of these houses should the system go down for whatever reason? First of all, second of all, are the heat pumps, do the heat pumps that you're using here, they both provide heat and air conditioning, do they also take care of water? That's a question that I would like to have answered. And the third question regarding the heat pumps are, how is the heat distributed throughout the house? Is it by ductwork, or is it by units that sit up on the side of, of the window, or up on the side of the walls? There are units that do that, and I'm just, I need to know the, the way you're getting the heat around the house.
You're going to make a note of these, so in case they can't come back tonight with the answers, you'll follow up at our next meeting.
Right, okay. Okay. I assume there are going to be children in this, in these six families, and maybe more in the, in the two non-affordable houses up front. Is there a place where children can get, can get on a bus? Is there a bus, is there a bust, what I would call a shelter for children, so that they could wait for the bus out of the snow? The other question I have is, one of the other questions I have is, this, this plan does not show the extent of the utilization of the woods that are already existing. I would hope that you would use as much of the trees throughout the, throughout the plot, throughout the both lots, as, as you, as much as you can, obviously not to disturb, we are looking at the, at the sun, for the, for the, obviously for the, for those, for what you need, but on the perimeter, my guess is you would need, you would, I would like to see as much of the retaining of the fauna that you can. That's what I have at this point.
Should be addressed. Let me take those backwards to forwards, hopefully, on the vegetation, maintaining as much of the woods as possible. Our construction director goes onto the sites, he flags every tree he thinks he can save, he probably overflags trees, and then we have to go back and take them down, because it's better to be conserved, do too much, save, try to save too many than it is to take them down. Just to be honest, with a small lot, when you clear for a foundation and a septic system, that is a lot of clearing. I mean, when you drive down the road and you see homes on small lots, they've been around for a while and trees have grown, but we try to save as much as we can, you know, we want to create homes that have that feeling, too. It's, you know, it's beautiful to have trees in your yard. On children and the school bus stop, I have actually learned this from our Oak Street project, is that the school administration will not start talking to us about bus routes and bus stops until families have moved in. They want to know numbers of children and ages of children.
But you would still provide a shelter for them? If in fact the bus was to stop there or they were to wait, no matter how many children there were?
Do, I don't, actually, I'm not sure. So I want to be careful there, because sometimes where the logical place to put a bus shelter is, is not on property that we own. So I don't want to overpromise anything. We do, as, you know, any home builder, any developer, try to be as conscientious about our families and safety. I can research that further, where would be a sensible part and what plays and whether it would be on our land or not, and try to get follow-up on that one.
I would like to see that, thank you.
May I add a comment? In terms of where we are in this process, when it comes to architectural and building details, we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves. If you look at the requirements of the regulations, I refer you to fifty-six point oh-five, Section Two, which discusses the elements of the application. What we have to prepare and provide at this point are preliminary site development plans showing the locations and outlines of buildings, et cetera. And when it comes to architectural drawings, preliminary scaled architectural drawings, these are preliminary. We have not made the kinds of decisions about this particular site and its architecture and the particular kinds of heat or backup systems, yet. What we generally do is provide the heat pump systems, and I'm not aware of any problems with it. But in terms of where we are in this process, this is, these are preliminary drawings. We don't have a full set of specifications and plans as yet.
I understand, but that's a concern. If you're going to build a house, you'd well better have a backup system if it's going to be all-electric, which I think is what, what you're driving at. And if it's so, then that's all I'm asking, are you going to do it or aren't you? And I think, my issue, my issue is, these are some of the, these are, as I read through your documentation, you mention it, and I'm just making comments on it. Now, if you want to hold off, you know, hold off answering it until we get later into this, that's fine, but my only concern is that when I see something written down that says this is what you're going to do, and I have a concern about it, then I have to ask the question. And one of the things that I particularly am interested in is if in fact you're going to have, you're going to consider these nonconforming, we, as members of the zoning board, if we're going to look at these houses in the future, two, three, four years from now, we need to know what the nonconformity is, and we don't know it. But you're asking it, you're making a statement in here that says these will be considered if we accept it in this document, then we've already said they're nonconforming. I don't believe it, I can't see it, so I can't comment, I can't say yes or no. So I'm just making comments on what you've, what you've written. You don't, you don't have to come back to me today, or any of us today, on any of these, but before this gets approved, you need to.
I quite agree, and we're willing to provide exactly what you're asking for.
Thank you.
It might help if, when you do answer that, you can tell us what you did over on Oak Street.
Yes, certainly.
Okay. I'm going to save mine, I've got a number of items. I'm going to let the other board members ask their questions.
I'd like to continue.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
No. I have one other issue, and I think it's probably an issue that is, concerns most of the community. And that, and that issue is that you're building a, a affordable housing, you're putting six units, plus you've got two existing units, they're not affordable. I don't know how many bedrooms, but there are eight septic systems going into a very small area, not too far from a, from a watershed, and in some cases, I think, maybe two or two and a quarter of the septic systems are in the flood zone. Now, I know from what I read in the documentation that there are no regulations pertaining to septic systems in this kind of a flood zone. But the town and I have concerns about we're adding nitrogen into a system, into a river system that already is down because of nitrogen. I'll give you a, for instance, I know that from the Route Twenty-eight Bridge down to the, to the ocean, I think it was probably within the last fifty years, that area used to have a considerable amount of eelgrass, which is, you know, the building blocks, if you will, for small fish and, and, and ocean wildlife, et cetera. It's gone. And the reason it's gone is because nitrogen is in the water, that's one of the main, the main reason. And we're contributing it to it, re-contributing to it eventually, not tomorrow, not the day after tomorrow, but soon, maybe not in our lifetime, maybe not, but it will happen. And my concern is, are we doing ourselves a disservice by doing this, putting this kind of a, of septic system so close to a natural resource? And I don't know what effort can be made to mitigate it, but whatever you suggestions you have, whatever research you've done to put at ease myself and members of this community would be helpful, because it's significant, because the damage that's been done by the town, not by you, but by the town, by building houses so close to that river, is, is tattam out to destruction. Nothing is, you know, it's gone, from a, from a wildlife habitat standpoint of view. So now the question is, can we do, are we, we're contributing more to it? The answer is yes. When? I can't tell you. I don't know what the, I don't know what it takes, how long it takes for the mitigation of nitrogen from a septic system to get to the river from where you, where you are. But I'm sure it's going to be years, maybe thousands, for all I know. But the issue is, can we, what are, what are we doing to mitigate that, if anything? And I'll let it, I'll let it go at that.
Well stated. Dan Ogula from Downkeep Engineering, I'm a civil engineer and land surveyor with Downkeep Engineering, helping Habitat out with this, this project. I guess I'd break that into two main categories. The nitrogen issue is an important one, it's one that we, we look at a lot. If there's a development that's on the open ocean, we tend not to worry about it, because it's diluted very quickly by trillions of gallons, and it's, you know, it, it doesn't become an issue. Where nitrogen goes into a sense of abeyment, you do focus a little bit more on it. What I would say about this is that it's a relatively small development, these are single-family homes, some are, you know, there's, there's always people that are, that are out and about, sometimes people live alone, the occupancy rates out front could, could vary. And what you get for, for effluent going into the ground is generally a fraction of what Title V says goes into the ground, that tends to be a very conservative rating in terms of the gallons per day. The systems that are designed here are fully compliant with, with Title V. Title V does look at nitrogen-sensitive areas, this is not mapped in a nitrogen-sensitive area, and so we, we fully meet the code. Were this mapped in a nitrogen-sensitive area, it limited to roughly three bedomes per acre, so we are allowed to do a higher density here by the, by the state code. What I would say is that the Herring River has a huge watershed upgrading, but, you know, there's, there's, I think the town has done well to conserve, you know, vast tracts of land, I have a, a handout that shows some of that upper watershed. You can see all the, the green that's up here, around the Herring River, out to Bell's Neck, east of there, north of the highway even, up the Herring River, there's just vast tracts, and then as you get north into the northern part of town, there's, there's a lot of open space that doesn't even show on these sheets. So you're dealing with a, with a system that's, you know, it's, I think, fairly robust in terms of the amount of groundwater that's coming in to dilute, and in terms of a good, a good tidal flush up and down. a good tidal flush up and down, we're pretty close to the open water. So certainly, if you're on an outgoing tide, any, the little bits that get in there are quickly washed right out to sea. So you're only talking about an incoming tide that would take even some of these parts per million up gradient. And one of the nice things about salt marshes is that they tend to be a nitrogen sink. In other words, they're able to digest that. It's actually a plant food, and they do quite well, the salt grasses do, with knocking down nitrogen. One thing to, you know, might make you feel a little bit better about eel grass is it did suffer a nasty blight. And so what that is, 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 you know, similar to like, you don't see the, the hickory trees or the chestnuts around anymore, because there was a blight and it's just, you know, it's, it's a viral-type compound that knocks it out. So separate from, from nitrogen, these, a lot of these beds were wiped out back in the fifties, before there was, you know, dense development by this blight. So even if the nitrogen were reduced back-to-back ground levels, it may not come back. There's just some strands that are, that are sensitive to that blight and, and simply wouldn't reestablish.
I do notice that you are, you are limiting in each home the ability to put in a well. Are you eliminating the ability for the house to put, for the homes to put anything on the lawns? So that you're not adding to the environment by adding, you know, lawn fertilizer, et cetera, et cetera, which can even do more damage than septic system, if you will?
Yeah. The, you know, one thing that I think would be a very reasonable condition, one of the most important things is that you put down a good, you know, four or five inches of loam. If you, if you put fertilizer on sand and try and, I mean, you could grow grass on sand, but the fertilizer can, can quickly go down to the ground. But grasses, you know, if fertilizer is applied properly, grass is very efficient at, at uptaking it and, and preventing it from going into the ground. Utmost among that, the studies I've seen is to get a nice, good generous quantity of loam spread. And then, I mean, we don't put in irrigation systems or, or anything like that.
There's no, there's no, there's no irrigation systems allowed, I'm sure.
Yeah, none, none, none proposed. I mean, you know, we, we try not to be too restrictive on things, but certainly none, none proposed, and, you know, it, so it'll be more of a Cape Cod lawn style. But to get that loam in there and to, so that it holds the moisture and that it keeps the grass healthy, so that if it does get a little bit of fertilizer, it can uptake it and not let it leach into the aquifer. But to finish the thought on the septics, again, they're, they're limited, they're, they're shallow, they've got a full five feet of nice dry sand under them at the highest groundwater period of the year. Most times, it'll be six or seven feet of sand. And you do get some nitrogen attenuation in a standard septic system. Obviously, you can put in an innovative alternative septic system, but there's, there's downsides to that. And it's, they're very expensive, and they use a lot of electricity, that use up, you know, you know, a lot of other resources, and it's simply, you know, not needed, in my opinion, in this area, because it's simply an area that can, can withstand a few more houses. If you look at the overview plan there, there's similar-sized systems down to our southeast. You know, the, every one of those houses has their own Title V septic on it with, you know, probably two or three bedrooms. They fit, they work, these are new ones that are, that are up higher. So the second part of your question on the flood zone issues, probably the most important thing is to realize that what we're dealing with here isn't a velocity zone where you get wave action, it's a stillwater flooding zone. And it has never flooded as high as it would have to flood to flood these septic systems, ever. It would have to go probably a foot and a half above the Hurricane of thirty-eight to even lap at these septic systems. So they're very safe from flooding. It would take a catastrophic flood to even approach them. But if it were to flood, it's simply a pipe-and-stone system that's underground, you've got a septic tank that's completely full of liquid already. And so to try and impact, if you had a hollow tank that might want to pop out of the ground, that would be one thing. But all these are, are right to the top with, with effluent already, and there's no tendency to float. They all have sealed covers per Title V. The ground is all going to be graded over them, loam and seed. And so they're still, if they were to get a catastrophic flood of that size, it would just come up and, and be near the systems and maybe a few inches over some of the, some of them, and the floodwaters would recede, and I would, in my opinion, be no damage. The, the floodwaters, you know, could tend to saturate if they were there for a long period. A tidal event, tidal-type flood with a hurricane tends to be a fairly short duration. You could get some groundwater into the ground, but again, these septic systems are designed, gravity goes down, and water is water, the specific gravity of sewage is identical to that of water, and there's no force for it to come up, so it'll, it'll simply go down harmlessly below the grade. And again, it's, if we have a flood that floods these septic systems, Harwich is going to have a lot more problems on its hands. It's going to be a massive event.
What is the depth of the, of the, of the earth before you get to here, before you get to something like having to have, I guess you call it, whatever you make pottery out of, clay? How low is the clay? What is the clay level on this, on this property? Where is it?
We never hit it. I don't believe, did Bennett ever get in the clay on the, on the logs?
Forty-five degrees below surface grade.
Forty-five feet, yeah. So about fifty feet below grade, which would be, and the water table's only down, you know, say, ten feet average, but six feet at the lowest. So way, way down. There is a layer of clay.
What is the water table?
The water table, we found, I, I could check the plans to get the exact level, but at the lowest levels of the lot, it was only down about five feet. And the higher sections, it's down quite a bit more than that. It's, on the second sheet of the plans, there's a, there's a detailed logs of where we hit the water.
Now, that's, that's the water level that it gives today?
Yeah. There, there's an adjustment that we put on it for the, for the seasonality of it. I'll just look at the back. So in terms of elevations above sea level, the highest were, the highest that it would adjust up is about three and a half feet above NAVD eighty-eight datum, and the ground goes up to about fourteen on this site.
So where is the lowest or the highest water table is where?
The water table is, is very, very level. It's just a slight gradient, you know, to the southeast on this one. So it's within inches, basically, you think about, it's flat. And, and the adjusted groundwater, again, that's with about a foot and a half, the two-foot adjustment on it, was at elevation about approximately elevation four.
Really?
I believe so, yeah, at the highest.
So you've got, the perk tests work?
Yeah, it's good sand. Harwich is known. It's a, it's a carver core sand, outwashed plain sand, no, no problems whatsoever with the, with the soils.
I didn't see a perk plan. I didn't see a perk result, so that's one of the questions.
Oh, yeah. The, the detail sheet, we can certainly submit that if it didn't make it in there. There's a, multiple logs.
Okay. Well, we, yeah, we need to know the perk tests were done. But the water level, you say is down about, the water table's down about four or five feet?
It's not that far down, yeah. I mean, a little feedback. It's not, it's, again, the, the ground varies, and we hit, we hit water, you know, it varied a little bit, but the highest, what we ended up using was about elevation four was the highest adjustment, and we used that for all the septic systems. So.
Isn't that a concern?
No. I mean, we deal with it all the time.
Well, you might deal with it all the time. I'm just trying to figure out, if you've got a water table, I got watered down four or five feet, and how deep's a septic system? Four or five feet more?
No, no, no. Well, again, what, the, the key is here, the lowest section of the lot.
Leach field, I guess is what I'm interested in.
Right. So we're, we put the, the flood zone is eleven, and, yeah, actually, yeah, the, I, I should correct myself. I said that the floodwaters might just lick at the septic systems, but I'm looking at it here, it wouldn't ever quite reach the septic systems. We put on eleven contour around that system, so the floodwaters would not reach the leaching fields.
I'm not interested in the flood, sir.
Again, it's elevation eight to fourteen of the grade, so it does vary, but the water table is level underneath it.
Okay, so, and let's go back a minute.
Sure.
The, the septic systems, the leach fields?
Yes.
How deep, how deep do those go?
They're fairly shallow in the ground.
Ah.
Yeah, we put them very shallow, and the reason for that is so you get the most separation to groundwater possible. So on the detail sheet, which I do apologize, we didn't provide, but we've got a full five feet from adjusted groundwater to the very bottom of that stone.
So the groundwater is how low below, how many feet below the, below the, the leach field?
Well, it's.
Average? Roughly?
It's, it's, well, it'd be, you know, it averages probably seven feet below, but at the highest time of the year, the groundwater does adjust up a little bit, and it'll get within five feet.
Gets within five feet of the bottom?
Of the bottom, yeah.
Of the leach, of the leach field?
Right. That's, and that's Title V code. You're absolutely required to have five foot of dry sand underneath your leaching field so that you get good virus attenuation and, and it keeps the groundwater pristine, yeah.
Okay. So you've got at least five feet of separation?
We do, yeah, and every single.
All right. Jesus, I was, okay.
And, and the way we do that is just to.
Now I'm all right.
Yeah, and we wouldn't put a septic system in the lowest area, so you're sort of elevated them all a little bit.
Thank you. I'm sorry I, I got going on it, but I heard five feet, I'm going, okay.
No, it's important, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to save my comments and questions until the other board members are done. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. A couple of questions on the project, as I read it first. I just want to confirm, the homeowners' association will involve only the six new structures, correct?
Yes.
So it does not involve the buildings in the front?
Correct.
Okay. And the buildings in the front, you will not take title to, they'll be retained by HECT?
Correct.
Okay. And HECT is free to basically do as they wish with these properties, I guess?
They're free to do what they can within the limits of the law, and?
They can do anything they want, then?
No. They can do what they're permitted to.
What the law permits, okay. Pretty good.
And they have made certain promises to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah. Okay. Well, my concern is, you briefly touched upon the issue of site control. And I have a concern about site control, and it is a substantial concern that it may go to the defectiveness or a defect in this application that I don't know if you can address. The purchase and sale agreement deals only with a rare portion of this property and does not deal with what is shown as lots seven and eight. But seven and eight are included within the project as described, and you are asking for zoning relief on those lots. You've also included a memorandum of understanding which virtually, which is says is solely for the purposes of establishing, solely for purposes of establishing site control in connection with this subdivision, but does not go on to describe one single element of control or one single incident of ownership, other than the word "control" for purposes of this subdivision. The document goes on to give HECT, in paragraph four, the right to retain all of the incidents of ownership, and as you just stated, they're able to do whatever they want to do within the scope of the law. So I am concerned that you do not have site control over the whole project. In addition to that, this document does not produce anything in the way of any color of title in the ultimate ownership of the project, which is the purpose of having site control, that ultimately you would own the entire project and exercise your development over it. In essence, what I believe I'm seeing here is a rather clever way to achieve zoning relief on two lots in the front of this that are clearly not part of the project in reality. And in order to avoid having to get variances for these two lots, they are being called included in the project, but in the reality is, they're never going to be part of this project. They're just going to be cut out of it and given to the original owner. I don't see how that meets the standard of site control. And as you know, without site control, the application is defective. The case law is fairly specific on that. The words "site control" are not defined in the CMIs or in the statute, so we have to look at the case law on it. All of the cases do ultimately envision that there will be means of obtaining ownership, at least in the future. And there are several cases, including the Hanover case and several others, that speak to exactly those issues. Maybe you'd like to respond and, and help me out with, how do you have site control that meets the legal requirements here?
I assume your comments are directed at lots seven and eight, and not the six that Habitat is to purchase?
Right.
Where we clearly have control?
Right.
As the right to purchase gives us under the purchase and sale agreement.
Right, correct.
And at this moment, answer your question as to lots seven and eight.
Okay. There are several cases on this where partial site control was achieved, but not full site control. And as a result, those applications were deemed defective. There must be at least some color of title, some ability that there's a likelihood in the future that you would obtain title. So what's happening here is, by the inclusion of these two front lots, you're asking us to grant you under forty-B. Zoning relief at a much easier standard than you could ever achieve by coming in here asking for dimensional variances for those lots, when in reality, they're not really part of this development at all. I don't view the memorandum of understanding as providing any control. I, and even aside from the memory, even if some minor amount of control was granted, without the ultimate intent to ultimately take title to these plots out front, site control is lost. You need to have site control for the entire project to qualify to be here. In other words, before we go any further with this hearing, unless that is remedied, in my view, it's, it's a, it's a disqualifier, and the application can be dismissed. Now, you certainly can retool this thing, but I, I think it's an obvious defect that the board can't proceed any further with it without correction. Our number-one job at the beginning is to determine completeness of application. That's job one.
Agreed.
And I'm not seeing that I have a complete application in front of me without complete site control. So I'm prepared to make a motion later on, but I'll just offer that comment at this point and leave it at that for now.
Yeah, I, Lidera could probably speak more eloquently to that, but I, I think the friendly forty-B process, it's pretty easily curable, because what you have to remember is that forty-B, you only have to have one out of four affordable. So these two can just be looked at as market. We can do some logistics and, and re-include them and come back with a, with a, with a project that still has.
That's not addressing the issue.
Way in excess of, of, yeah, no, but.
That's not addressing the issue we're talking about at all.
Well, but if they are made part of the project, we get site control of them, then they can be the two market rates. And, you know, to be clear, they're, they're, you know, that we were, you know, it's working with, with HECT to, as, as Lidera said, a win-win situation. They're able to have those things come off their rolls and, and be, continue to be part of the town.
Unless you're going to buy HECT's property out front, I don't see how you cure that.
Well, what you would do is, is probably have a joint application. You know, just have them be, have some skin in the game, you know, as part co-applicants, and then, you know, just have the next hearing and proceed, you know? They'll just be the market rates, and they'll get whatever relief this board, you know, seems is appropriate, but remembering that we're way over.
Essentially, if what we have is a paper charade here to conclude these two lots that really have nothing to do with this, you're attempting to achieve zoning relief under forty-A, under the guise of forty-A, which you really need to get somewhere else.
Or amend the application so that they're properly under forty-B.
Or so, so it becomes part of the development.
Sure.
All right?
And just, I was going to hold my comments, but I was very troubled by the two market-rate lots not being included in a project, because I think we're going to want to put restriction, we're going to want to put conditions on them, which.
That's why I asked.
I'm not sure how we could achieve that at this point.
I'd like to clarify, I think there's a piece that's getting a little confused. The two front homes, the market rate will not have affordable housing restrictions. They will still be subject to the comprehensive permit. So if this board wants these fit desires, conditions, they are in the comprehensive permit, and those market rate lots as part of the comprehensive permit are subject to those conditions. When we talk about not being restricted, we're affordable housing people, so we think about buyers and affordable homes and families, and when we say not restricted, we mean not restricted with an affordable housing deed rider that keeps the price. restricted with an affordable housing deed rider that keeps the price affordable.
Now, HEC was never submitted as a developer in this project and hasn't gone through any review by the state, correct?
There's two ways, I believe, that we could address your concerns, um, and, you know, I believe that, you know, Warren, I should probably let him speak, um, why not? Do you want me to keep going?
Not sure, there were some aspects of this that DHCD has looked at, and we have the project eligibility letter, which does establish some principles.
I understand, I read it.
Okay, and I under, I understand your concern, I hear your concern.
I mean, I think.
I have, I need to look at the case law, honestly.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, if, if we come back with just another paper charade about, you know, these two lots, that you're not doing anything with them, they're not part of the real project, uh, and we have a joint application, I'm not sure you can do that, um, I'm not sure that changes anything, the substance of what's really going on here is, your real development here is this back six acres. And, and you said that.
Yes, the area of our concern.
And that's the real project.
We're building affordable houses, yes.
Well, we shouldn't be have, be forced to give you favorable zoning relief for property that's really not within this development, that's the problem.
I hear you.
Yeah, the only thing that would come up is that you need to have access to one of the homes that is already existing there, you need to have the road going as a driveway. That's one of the things I was getting at when I said I don't have a plot plan. It was obviously those two homes are two homes, and the only reason they're there is because of an agreement you have, but they're not part of your project, and that's why I was having trouble in, when you, when I got into these waivers, when I saw the things about the two homes, I'm going, wait a minute, this is 40B, this is for the, for the six little homes that we're gonna have a people helping to build, and the two other ones are just to be sold.
If I might, Mr. Chair, to follow up on that?
All right, Mr. Singer.
And we may not be able to give you all the answers tonight, however, just to reiterate something that, that Liddara said, we can certainly get you in existing conditions when, or they can give that to you, but the, there are two, as we said, there were two lots there today, the houses exist there today. When you have a 40B development, you're creating it on a piece of land. Today, the land that's there has two houses and a barn on it, it's two different parcels. The two houses that remain on two separate lots, lots seven and eight, are clearly part of the subdivision, because they're lots seven and eight on the subdivision. Today, those two lots don't exist in that form, it's two big lots, and so I believe that this is an eight-lot subdivision, as Attorney Brody said. As Dan then said, two of the lots are market-rate lots, six of the lots are going to be under the affordable housing restriction, very standard, actually, it's a very high percentage for 40Bs since you only have to have 20%, this is much higher, and you have the road going through. They are market-rate lots, they're not gonna be part of the affordable housing restriction, as Liddara said, however, they are definitely part of the subdivision. The documents, Mr. Burke, that you referred to were all submitted to the state, they all did look at it in issuing the project eligibility letter. Certainly, there's gonna be more looking at it, I just wanted to add that in that they're not, it's not a charade, it's the whole lot is part of the subdivision, and in this case, all of the subdivision is to be sold. Habitat will be selling their six homes, HEC will be selling the two homes, the market-rate homes at Elstelone, so there's nothing different than you'd have on any subdivision. The difference here is that two of the structures already exist.
The difference is you don't have control of them, the applicant has no control, that's the problem.
That's a matter, I think, for further review and discussion, we respectfully may not agree with that because of the process that's gone through with the state, but we'll get you more information, or Attorney Brody will.
Question?
What, okay, go ahead.
No, I'll hold it.
Do anything for me?
Uh, not at this time, I may come back with some more.
Mr. Donahue?
I'll make it relatively brief. With regard to, um, the property, when the property is sold, being the six homes, is there gonna be a restriction with regard to rental of that property by the homeowner and the use of that property as a 40, as an Airbnb?
Uh, I can speak to the homeownership and the deed rider. The deed rider requires the homes to be primary residents, there is a prohibition on rental. I've been reading a lot about Airbnb, and I don't want to specifically speak to that, but I do know that they are primary occupancy, they are rental restricted, and also, um, what I know from having the fortune to meet some of the great families, um, that work with us and move into these homes, these are people who are working here in the community, holding multiple jobs, the homes are modest, I just can't imagine anyone having space to rent out a home, or rent out a room. I mean, that's, again, anecdotal, that's, but these are people who are here, working, their kids are going to school, um, so they're part of the community, and the homes are small, and there is a rental prohibition.
Mr. Prebet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna thank Mr. Burke, I've been struggling with that question regarding, uh, the subdivision in general, but I'm just about six years of law school, less than I could ask a right question. However, I did notice that the, um, it would make the first two lots, 93 and 97, nonconforming. Basically, that was my question, and the rest of it's been asked. The, um, as far as engineering cost, the, the question that I have, uh, the, um, the leaching trenches within the, um, the road, roadway, and also the turnabout, and that was brought up as an exclusion. I mean, is that just good engineering, it doesn't make any sense, right?
Well, so the, the question, generally what you will do is you'll take a leaching and, and move it outside of the right-of-way and an easement. On this site, we didn't have a lot of room, you know, between the septic systems and the homes and trying to save a tree here or there to do that, so it can be properly engineered to be H-20 rated, uh, which is, they can drive a truck over, and what we'll do is simply use a shallow system and then put, uh, filter fabric, uh, over the top, so you'll get very, very little, uh, settling, and it can safely go into the roadway. It's done, you know, all the time, uh, you know, we do, you know, huge parking lots with drainage under them all the time and never have any problems, so I would not anticipate any problem here, it's, it is technically though a waiver, so we did request it.
Okay, thank you. Will there be parking on the street? There was no limitation as far as parking in the street. And the reason why I'm asking that question, and I know there was some issues regarding to a previous project we had, where the, the street was a little bit narrow, closely to the 20-foot area, the distance calling out, and that was a very difficult location for kids to play, and there was no access for them to walk along, obviously, there was no sidewalks, so.
Yeah, what we tried to do is have room for two cars to pull off on everyone, but a guest would probably pull on the shoulder, you know, if you, and so temporarily, I don't think we'll post it, no parking, you know, it'd just be like a typical neighborhood where, you know, people would not generally do that, but if you have a guest over, they, they might.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, based, based on, on the fact is, I guess even at the very, uh, beginning of the driveway, there was an issue as far as turning ratio for larger trucks and, and certainly for the turnabout.
On this project or a different one?
On, on this one right here.
On this one, yeah, yeah. We designed this so that it actually, the, the, the Fire Department, Engineering Department are satisfied, we can get, uh, a full, uh, single-unit truck around there, which is a smaller semi, can come right down there and make a full turn, because initially, when we had it, we had a green donut in the middle or an island, which, you know, I like to do when possible, but we were requested because of the ability to maneuver the trucks, um, and snow removal especially, so that they can back and fill and just kinda tuck snow in different areas around the cul-de-sac to remove that island, so you've got quite a bit of room to maneuver at that end, and I, I wouldn't anticipate any problems with truck turning movements on this one. So I, I think engineering and fire are happy, and, uh, you can get a standard truck around there, no, no problem.
Okay. Um, the, um, I, this, this is a question, it's so serving, but I, I am a, a citizen of Harwich, so I care about Harwich and its residences, number one. From the previous projects, on Oak Street and also the one on Depot, off of Depot, um.
Gomes Way?
Pardon?
Gomes Way.
Gomes Way?
Yeah.
I've worked plenty of roofs on that one. What was the percentage of people, of residents that are there now that were previously Harwich I'm not to be exact, I mean, we're.
So, um, I can only do Oak Street, 'cause I looked that up recently, that, um, six of the seven qualified for the local preference, which was over the, you know, we can offer up to 70%, so it was over the 70% because often a local resident gets chosen in the open lottery as well, so six of the seven qualified for the, uh, local preference, and five, it turned out, were already employed in the town of Harwich. That's what I can give you from my head, 'cause I looked it up recently, more than that, I would have to research.
Thank you. I have no more questions at this moment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, it's a part, the marketing plan and the lottery plan and the 70% of the homes that local preference would apply to, is that 70% of six or 70% of eight? 70% of six, so again, we have evidence that it's really a six-unit subdivision. It seems as if the property.
Only six are affordable.
It, it would always be in, uh, for instance, uh, I know of a for-profit developer with a 40B in Brewster, that is 28 homes, seven of them are affordable, 25% only of those affordable, 70% of those 70 got local preference, that is a standard way with the state process. Also, with the sort of market rates and the affordables, especially homeownership, they always do end up separate, because it's, uh, in a for-sale development, if you use a 40B to create 100 lots, if it's a for-sale development, all 100 get sold to usually different buyers. The affordable percentage goes through the Affordable Housing Program process and gets sold to income-qualified buyers, and then the remaining, typically 75% of a for-profit 40B get sold to market-rate buyers. I mean, that's the process of subdivision. The small twist with this one is that there are existing structures, um, which I have to say Habitat took as a plus, that we were working collaboratively with HEC and their buyer to save those. I mean, we thought that that was part of what the town and some concerned neighbors were hoping for, was to save the front Chase home. I think we could, it wouldn't seem like such a odd thing, I mean, not that we'd be doing this, but to say, okay, we're gonna demo those and build six Habitat homes and sell two lots. You know, that would seem less odd, but I don't feel that's in keeping with what the intent was when we worked through with the Harwich Housing Committee and the Board of Selectmen and proposed this as a project that would help maintain those homes.
Speaking for myself, I'm confused about how you can create two nonconforming lots of less than 40,000 square feet and then sell them when you say they're part of your subdivision?
The 40B process, in general, uses, allows developers to create smaller lots. I think in the dozens, if not hundreds, of 40Bs I've worked on, all lots end up being, I mean, nonconformings is sort of an odd word because they are subdivision, and then they are 40B lots, but they.
But then they're gonna be not part of this.
Their market rate, they're controlled by the comprehensive permit, they will always be a part of the 40B development, but the market rate component, typically with a for-profit developer, 75% would not have the affordable restrictions.
And, but did I understand you to say they won't be part of the homeowners' association?
That was, uh.
That was my initial.
That was a choice of Habitat because we.
That's what the application says.
Yeah, I mean, that's how, because the homeowners' association will control, um, maintenance, repair, snow removal of the road, of the cul-de-sac, and that's the main goal. If we didn't, if the town wanted to take that road, which I've been told Harwich does not take private roads, if the town did wanna take that road and make it a public road, we wouldn't have a homeowners' association, there'd be no common elements to share responsibility for. So the homeowners' association, we try to do a common sense approach, what are you sharing costs and responsibilities? And it's the drainage, and the snow plowing, and the road, which 97 will not use at all, or the home on 97, and the home on 93 uses such a small portion of the cul-de-sac that it didn't seem to make sense to put them as part of the homeowners' association. I mean, that, that was more a common sense, who's spending money on what, approach, if that.
To go back to Franco's question about parking, I think you said you're assuming two cars, and then guest cars in the street. You talked about busy families, multiple jobs, multiple people. Do you anticipate the possibility that there will be, um, households, mixed-generation households where more than two people drive, and there are more than two vehicles, and that parking on the street might be required all the time, pretty much?
I, yeah, I, uh, Dan just mentioned that we could lengthen the driveways in the future, but I believe that in general, we try to conform to standards for residential home, many homes have a two-car driveway.
Not objecting to that, but the question goes to the size of the cul-de-sac, because I think it, well, wanna revisit the letter from the Fire Department about that, the comments from the Fire Department.
Okay, I'm gonna ask my questions, um, I'll make my comments. I, I would like to see some landscaping on this, I'd like you folks to work up a landscaping plan for us, to, um, sort of break these from the street view a little bit. You know, we've had a lot of comments about the historic houses in that neighborhood, and it's not a historic district, but I do think I would like to see a little screening back there and some landscaping. I went by the Oak Street project last week, I think the houses look great, but there's very little landscaping, but there it doesn't matter. I think here, it, it really does matter. So I'd like to see some, maybe some evergreens in front of, say, at the, on the lot six in that area, and, uh, on the little jog over on this area, maybe a few, you know, it's gotta be reasonable, 'cause we still need line of sight on that point, but I would like to see that. Where is the closest fire hydrant to this project, do we know? If it doesn't show on the plan, at least I couldn't see it, is it?
I think, I don't know if I got it on the plan or not, but we are putting one in right here.
Yeah, I think it was.
There actually is a fire hydrant.
You're gonna put one in?
Yeah, we're gonna run the water main down, and there's a hydrant that's between these two lots, right where I'm pointing with the laser, right there, so we'll, we'll be installing a hydrant there. As I recall, it was down the road a little bit this way, and I'm sure there's one not too far the other way, but, um, it was, it did look like it is far enough, so we wanted to put in a hydrant.
Okay, uh, at some point before we're done, I would like to see the homeowners' association agreement. Any provisions for site lighting along the cul-de-sac?
No.
No, okay.
We wouldn't object if the homeowners put up their little post light by their driveway.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know, it was just a question, I'm not saying you have to, just a question. Okay, when I went out and walked up the front, there is a, three monster pine trees there, which probably are on 87, although it's hard to tell, the second one had a red surveyor's cloth on it, does that mark the property line? I, I had no idea what it was, and there were a lot of these, you know, red bandana, you know, other surveyors tie them up, there were quite a number of them around.
Well, we were. Well, we were asked at one point to flag out some of the roadway and some of the buildings, so there's quite a few tags around. But there was a very small section of fence that was right in the lot line up near the corner there, so that's a good reference marker, right on that corner. But I, I don't, I don't have it memorized, what those other ones were. But we probably staked out some of those catch basins and some of the center of roadway and a couple of the lots a while back.
Well, I guess my real point was I couldn't tell where the lot line was on the ground out there, but these three monster pine trees look to me like they're going to, you know, possibly affect line of sight. Now, I don't think you own, I don't think they're on your property. I think they're on 87 Main.
Yeah.
So when you're working with the neighbor, maybe you could get permission to lop off some of the lower branches so that you've got a good line of sight.
I think that, you've hit on it exactly. And when we measured back from the fogline, the proper distance to look down the sightline, there are a couple of branches that hang down. I actually walked over and snapped one off myself. They'll just have to maintain that in the future. You certainly didn't, you know, wouldn't want those sagging down, but the trunks luckily themselves won't have to be moved. There, there's plenty of sight distance past that.
Yeah, I think if you can lop some of the branches, it'll solve the issue.
Yeah, yeah, it's a very good sight distance, but you will, and that's actually, there's some case law on that, it's a general law that you do have to maintain shrubbery on your property so it's not a hazard to others. So I think that's certainly very reasonable and we'll, we'll maintain that.
Okay, we'd like a copy of the Conservation Commission filings. Where on the cul-de-sac are you going to give the 87 Main Street neighbor access?
Lidera, do you want to address that or I can address that? So the neighbor to the west we're talking about?
Yes.
What they would do is come off about in this area here, just as background and so people are aware, this is a very large lot that was purchased by Virginia here, and she could easily do a panhandle with it, with a big lot in the back there if she wanted to in the future. So we just talked about that if she wanted to, we'll save her, you know, 75 or 80 feet of pavement and she can just come off here, and that would reduce the number of curb cuts on Route 28, which is always an admirable thing. So right about where the basins are, we'd probably peel it off there if and when she wanted to. It was my understanding she has no immediate plans too, but, you know. Mr. Chairman?
Just, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, wait a minute, not done yet. Who's that?
If you don't mind, an extension to your question. And since that is a private road, what would the implication would be to have yet another four, go for that? Sorry.
I was going to add to that because I think there's a lot of small pieces in this small development that are adding some complexity. By giving our neighbor access over the first portion of that cul-de-sac, we're not increasing any potential development that she may or may not desire to do because of Harwiches, and I reviewed this with your planning department, because of the panhandle zoning lot provision. She could do that anyway. It just makes for, you know, better curb cuts not to have multiple. And so we thought it was a good neighbor thing to do. We were actually very heartened. She bought that property fully knowing about this development, and we contacted her, and it was just a very happy collaborative call. It's great to have, you know, such positive neighbors. But again, we're not increasing her development potential, and I'm sorry, your question was...
That was my question, sorry. Would that imply that we would have to make a wider road there in that section where, prior to the... The short answer is no. The longer answer would be that, you know, the pavement widths and the turning radiuses and, you know, it basically would be just one more driveway coming off the cul-de-sac in that area there. And so you, you don't usually concern yourself over, you know, driveways as long as they're 20 or 30 feet apart, which these would be. And it's in an area where it's 20-foot of pavement plus a berm, so I, and it's not on a, it's on the outside of a shallow curve. So it's a good location for driveway, good sightlines, good grades, no, no real issues that I would see with that. Thank you.
Okay, the Judah Chase House, the preservation restriction, is it going to be conveyed under MGL Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33? I'm sorry?
Depending on how the final project shapes up, that is the plan at the moment.
Okay, because I would point out in the file, the Massachusetts Historical Commission says it will not approve a preservation restriction limited to the front facade of the building only. So you need to look at that and come back to us on that.
All right, you have that from Mass Historic?
Yes, it's in the file, right?
I... I'll follow, we'll follow up on that.
Yeah, you need to look at that and come back to us and tell us how you're going to resolve that. I, too, was very troubled about the, the market rate lots. And I think if we resolve Mr. Burke's issue and go forward, I would propose conditions on those restricting any further development, basically to the footprints and to the existing units. Because what you're asking us to do is approve something that we have no knowledge of what's going to happen there. Okay? You're asking us to create, somebody who I think, the non-conforming, well, there would be basically illegal lots except for 40B. You cannot have those two lots legally under zoning unless they're swept under 40B, which I understand. But I think since we have no plans for development, we need to put some conditions restricting them to the footprint, to the number of units. And I would also require that if they be reconfigured or taken down and rebuilt, that they be in generally the same architectural style and materials as our affordable rent units. So it's one pleasing development. I think that's only fair because you, you know, you don't have any, any drawings, architectural plans. We don't know what's going to happen there.
That's why I wanted the plot plans.
So we would need to put some conditions, and I think they would be reasonable.
That's another aspect that makes the, the application incomplete. No information which is required, the renderings and so forth on these two buildings were submitted, yet they're intended to be, according to the applicant, part of the project. But the reality is, by virtue of the fact they've submitted none of that information, the real intent is they're not part of the project. My, my, I guess I'm concerned about continuing on with this without some resolution of this...
I think at this point...
I think it's a gateway issue.
Before we go to the public, we need to address this. That was my intent.
I think we do, and I guess if the solution is to amend an application and, and come up with another applicant, a joint applicant, a joint venture or something like that, we simply, we can't attend, we can't go forward with this application. It would have to be a new application, be a new applicant, a new entity. Information that is deficient on these buildings would have to be submitted. The application is incomplete in a, in a variety of ways. I'm not sure that you can, we can just continue it and you can just cure it. It, it may need a whole new application if we're going to have new players, new agreements and so forth in place. I guess, question is, should we continue on with this or should the applicant, you know, withdraw and, and come back with another application? Do you think the solution is something that can be handled in a, I mean, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to deny without prejudice so that the applicant could come back, but I, I think the application is clearly defective.
I, I, we're being pressured for no particular reason. We do have an issue. I recognize the issue. The issue needs to be researched, briefed, and argued, presented, whatever, before we can and you can make a decision. So I don't see us making a decision on withdrawing our application tonight, certainly not without doing the research into the cases that you've already read that I haven't.
Yeah.
So I'd really like that opportunity to do that.
I, do we need any kind of agreement on time?
No, we have, we, we don't have a time limit to make a decision as long as we move expeditiously. Our time limit was to open the hearing.
180 days.
180 days.
Okay.
But I think we're well within that. If we were not able to achieve that, we could, right now, deny without prejudice. That would stop the clock, they can come in again. We have not asked for any fees in this and we're prepared to waive fees. There's no prejudice, I mean, it's the same material all over again, but it appears that it's going to need some, some type of a fix. We are on for two nights from now. Does it make sense? Now, on the other hand, I am sensitive to the fact a lot of people came out here tonight to, to talk about this, but...
I'm okay with going forward at this point.
Want to hear, but I think...
And we'll just, you know, we'll leave this in abeyance. In the meantime, you know...
Need a testimony, because I mean, the public is here, I don't want to...
You've got to do some homework and come back to us.
We do.
I agree.
I'm willing to go forward, the people are here, let's hear the public comments.
And what I, if I could just add too, that we're, we're in pretty good shape in terms of plot plans out front there because the engineering standards for a 40B, and that's a very accurate survey, those, those are shown precisely. You know, we can scale the distances and some of them are shown precisely. The new septic systems are shown, the number of units are shown, the parking is shown, everything is shown, existing trees, new driveways. So I, I, in my heart of hearts, felt that these are absolutely part of the application, condition them in any, in any manner that you feel reasonable, and then go off their way so conditioned. And because it's a friendly 40B and the selectmen are in favor, and we've got so many favorable reviews from all the boards and the Cape Cod Commission, I, I think this is going to go forward, you know, very, in a similar, similar manner to what's there now. It's just a matter of getting the application tidied up, so I'm very comfortable asking or answering any questions out there. And I think the only thing we don't have is a sketch of the addition, but that's simply a little shed addition, move from the side to the back of that one unit, and we can provide that very quickly.
Well, assuming you get your control issue, but I also like the landscape plan to include landscaping on the two market rate lots. I think this whole, if we go forward, the whole site should be landscaped nicely.
So I, I will hold off making a motion to deny in order to let the public speak?
Yes.
We have it continued again?
We've got the issue on the table.
Yeah, on the table. You'll come back with, you know, more information on that and we'll...
Certainly will.
We'll go from there, okay.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public, and we will first start, is there anyone in the public who would like to come forward in support of the application? Support of the application.
Hi, my name is Joan McCarty.
Uh, to the microphone, please, ma'am, thank you.
My name is Joan McCarty. I'm a Harwich resident. I volunteered for Habitat for the last 16 years. I have been so impressed with each development that we've come across and we've, and I've gone out of state. These are a bunch of good people trying to save the town, what they're looking for and, and give people homes. And I think when we start saying, well, it's down the street from my house, it's, it's, I get a little nervous about the mentality of I live in a better place than you do. I just would like to say that I hope that you'll consider that it's something that's dearly needed for people that can't afford to buy housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Wastek here in Harwich. I've also volunteered many times for Habitat, spent a lot of weekends over in Gomes Way when we developed that community. Couple things. People who are living in Oak Street, the homes, and if you haven't had a chance to view that community, please do so, and the same thing with Gomes Way. Number of the people living there and living in Gomes Way are people who check you out of some of the grocery stores, who do some work in your houses, who have worked in, are at your churches. These are people who live in this community. I was a member of a church working with youth group, and there are two members of that youth group now living up in Gomes Way. This is integral to what we are as a community. We need diversification. I'm a Realtor, I've spent 32 years in real estate in this community, and I see now that the homes being purchased, over three-quarters of those homes are second homes. We're seeing a huge flight of the youth from Cape Cod because they can't afford to live here any longer. And I know I'm part of that. As a Realtor, I, I've contributed to that, and that's one of the reasons I do give back. I'm also a landlord, I own a number of condos in Madison and Harwich. I don't have to advertise for my rentals. My rentals are rented immediately after they become vacant because there's so little rental housing here. This is so important, who we are as a community, the diversification, the jobs that many people don't want to fill are being filled by people who are moving into these communities. I'm proud to be in Harwich and to see the Habitat projects that we have created in this community, to lend to the diversification of these people who don't have to leave Cape Cod, the young families now who are in Gomes Way. You'll see people who've had children now after they moved in there. Anyone who speaks about values, Gomes Way, great community, and again, I enjoyed being there and working there for many, many weeks at a time. There was a home sold in the next street over on Sterling Road, and people I've heard in the past say, well, a community like a Gomes Way or, or Oak Street is going to impact value. Couldn't be the furthest thing from the truth. Year and a half ago, a home that abutted the Gomes Way subdivision sold for $620,000 above the assessed value, had no impact on value. You heard Lidera Zola talk about the property right next door to where this community is going in. A woman bought that property with full knowledge that a community was going to be built by Habitat next door. Up in Oak Street, there was a lot of, and that community was being discussed, people were in uproar because they said values are going to tumble up in that area of Old Pine in Oak Street and Cottonwood. Home sold late last year, the corner of Old Pine, two doors away from the Oak Street community. No impact on value. It sold at market rate, above assessed value. These projects are important, and I think the whole idea of the lots seven and eight, there was an outcry to preserve the historical home that's there. And this was an opportunity to come together to try to preserve a house that means something to the history of Harwich. So counselor, it may not be specifically correct according to the law, but let's not say no. Let's say, how can we make it work so we can preserve this home that people want to preserve? You've got neighbors who want to see that preserved, at the same time, being able to provide housing for people in this community that is so, so badly needed. So I strongly urge you to do what you can to make this project work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just one comment on that, that's why we've asked Attorney Singer to come back with us to see how we can work out the, the restriction on the Judah Chase House. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Bernadette Wastek. I'm a resident of Harwich for the last 30 years. I'm an educator in the now Monomoy School District, formerly Harwich. And just to give a little perspective, an example on what's already been said and echo it, I worked too on the Gomes Way neighborhood when that was being built back in '09. When I first went to work on the project, I didn't even realize it, but I got there and of the eight homes, one was a young couple, former members of a youth group here in town. One was a colleague of mine in the Harwich Schools daughter, and five others of the other six were present family members whose children I had in school, whose homes I helped to build.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. My name's Arthur Bowden. I live at 800 Orleans Road, right up the street. I wear two hats. I am the Housing Committee Chair, and I also work with Habitat in construction, and my wife and I are family partners. Obviously, I can't speak as eloquently as Mr. Wastek can, but I jumped up here because I, I need the practice of speaking, but I'm going to speak about housing. I'll, I'll take that after, I like it. I'm going to be short and sweet. Habitat is a great organization. I spent today up on scaffolding, banging on the sidewall shingling. I come down tonight, had a little supper, come over here, put my other hat on, my Housing Committee hat. But I wear two hats. They're a great organization. I can't say enough about them. I've been with them since Gomes Way. I jokingly say that if the rest of our government was running, run anywhere nearly as efficient as Habitat for Humanity is, we would have no problems. Now also, I listened to the comments tonight, and the comments are great. Even some were getting a little testy, but that is great. This, this is the way things should be. Everything is out on the table, everyone answers it. I, I like what, you give Habitat an opportunity to, you know, to dot a few more i's or cross a few more t's and come back to, I think this is great. But in the final analysis, I'm going to leave you with this. Your opening comment, Mr. Chairman, consistent with local needs. you with this. Your opening comment, Mr. Chairman, consistent with local needs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somebody over here had their hand up?
I had more comments or questions, not so much against it, but not particularly for it. So, I had no question.
Well, why don't we take this gentleman, and then we'll take you.
My name is Joe Toel. I live in Harwich on Neal Road. And I've been with, working with Habitat for about ten years now. Today, I was with Arthur here at, in Yarmouth, working sidewalling up three stories to sidewall this house, shingle this house. And there was five of us working up there. We accomplished maybe about twenty rows of shingles, the whole side of this house. These houses are not big houses. You look at the, the rooms in them and stuff, they're, they're modest. I mean, exceedingly modest, you know? They're not elegant homes in any way. They're homes that are well-built, they're well-insulated, and we do most of the work. As I say, I've probably been working, probably been responsible for building maybe fifty houses here at this chapter on Cape Cod. All the time, I ran into people that I know, that I worked with, at Shaw's in, in Harwich. I'd run into a couple of people all the time working there. These are people that work right in town. They're not people that are going, going to move out of town. They stay right in town. Their children go to school in town. And I was taking some people the other day into one of the houses that were building in Yarmouth, two, two homeowners, and they were just putting on the, the sheet rock on one of the homes there, and brought them in. And they were looking at this house, looking all around it, and this is where the bed's going to go. We got a closet here. They never had this stuff before. They jammed into a house with their mother-in-law, or with their brother, or something like that, and the kids are sleeping on the floor in a mattress. There's a couple that was in, in Oak Street. They had twins. They had a house there. And the kids used to sleep on a mattress in the same room with, with the mother and father. So, they go into this new house, and on Oak Street. Do you think these kids would sleep in their own room? No, they wouldn't. They used to sleep in on the floor in a mattress. So, the mother had to put the mattress on the floor right next to the bed with her husband and stuff, and these kids are sleeping on that. These are people that are going to stay in Harwich. The kids are going to go to school in Harwich. And I am impressed. There's one lady that we, every, every time that we see her at the end of the workday, like today, she's practically in tears, saying, "I thank you. I thank you so much that you're building. I can't get, how are, how are you people building this house for nothing, for helping us?" And I would urge you, in brief, to, to look favorably upon this project. It helps so many people and so many kids. I mean, if you were to talk with them and interview them, you could be duly impressed with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Got to get my glasses out. I can't see a thing. My name is Darian Davis. I live on Willow Street in West Harwich. I have a couple of questions and comments. So, I don't know how far I go, so we'll give it a shot. I work for a building department for another town, so I am familiar with the process of the forty B and how building permits move along. How does this project relate to the Chatham project? Where I know that there were four houses or four lots that were initially started. I don't believe any of them are complete at this point, and it was, the permit was taken out in January of two thousand fifteen. If this gets to go ahead, how long is this going to take? Are we talking five years, ten years for this to be complete?
Okay. I have no knowledge of the Chatham project, but...
Want to answer to that?
Yes. Why don't you go over and identify yourself at the mic, please, ma'am?
My name is Vicki Goldsmith. I'm the, I'm a Harwich resident, and I'm the Director of Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod. This site, well, first of all, Chatham didn't take five or ten years. It did take somewhat longer than we expected. The reason, and it's fine to walk on that, that site now to take a view. It's a spectacularly beautiful site now that it's been wrangled, I would say. It's on very steep slope down to a pond. It's a project that was requested by the town to build, or a request for proposals, you know, was put out by the town, very much at the request of the town, to, to build this project. We were the only respondent to build four homes there. Very steep slope. We took extra time to bring in a physical engineer, to double-check that engineer, to build extensive retaining walls, to make sure the soil was properly compacted. So, we took substantial extra time to make sure that that site was properly developed to really stand the test of time and be a, a safe and good site for the four homes there. So, that had some particular circumstances where we took the right amount of time to do the job the right way.
Are any of them done yet?
We expect to be closing on those homes in June and July. Absolutely this year. Absolutely this year.
It might help to, to state how long the Oak Street project took in Harwich, approximately?
I, I believe, and we can, we can produce those, we maintain those stats, but from wall raising, between ten and twelve months each house. So, from the time of what people in the community think of actual house building, ten to twelve months. Honestly, there's a period of time of engineering and the, you don't do the finished architectural and engineering until you get through the zoning board of appeals. You do that finished work. And then there's a period where we actually block out a twelve-month period now to put in the infrastructure. And halfway through that time period is when we open up applications, and then we move ahead to build the homes. So, a lot of developers plan very quick turnaround. We find that normally, we, you know, we build pretty, pretty efficiently compared to what's, what's out there. We just don't promise anymore to, you know, "Oh, we're going to start building houses three months after we get the permit." It's not possible. We have to put in a road.
Okay. Thank you. Ma'am?
Let's see. I was just, where I am, in a butter toward a butter, I was wondering, who determines that the six Habitat houses, who determines that six is a good amount for there versus four, whereas the lots are ten thousand square feet? It just seems so crowded to me.
We started this project, we worked with the Harwich Housing Committee, we worked, we were before the Board of Selectmen. Some of the way we look at sites in general is that we look at a continuum. We see the, typically a minimum that could be developed, which is under zoning as of right. We look at a maximum that could be developed, which is usually limited by infrastructure, such as septics and sometimes wells. We look at the surrounding neighborhood. And then we try to choose a space in the middle that feels right. It's also balanced by finances. The project has to be financially feasible for us. If you look at some of the plans, the assessors cards, I think Dan had, there was another one, most of the area has smaller lots. The neighborhood directly to the south of us has seven thousand five hundred square foot lots. Our lots, I believe, are mostly nine thousand. I looked, nine to ten thousand. I think the smallest lot we have is eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square feet, which is more than the neighbors to the south of us. So, we look at the neighborhood, we look at the area, we look at the finances, and the land is the limiting resource in terms of housing. I mean, we are at a crisis level in terms of affordable housing on the Cape. We need to use tools like forty B. If land wasn't so expensive, we could create affordable housing using existing zoning. Unfortunately, where we are in terms of development, we can't do affordable housing that way. We need to use smaller lots. So, we try to be respectful of the neighborhood, but we also try to be respectful of town funds that are awarded to us, our volunteers' efforts, our donations, and we strike a balance. Six was the number that fit here in terms of our proformas, which are part of our application. And also, like I said, they are slightly larger than lots around us, and also slightly smaller than some lots as well. It's a mix.
Thank you.
Just, just to add one thing too, it's, it's nice to remember that Habitat loves to do the sweat equity thing and, and the pride of homeownership. So, these are little single-family homes. One way that you could certainly have a lot more density and a smaller footprint would be to, you know, a multifamily dwelling on this site. Forty B, of course, would allow that, and you could have, you know, many more units with a great big combined septic system and a parking lot, but that's not what they are. It's, it's, we think, a pretty tasteful fit, and the single-family aspect, I think, is a, is a very nice one. It fits in with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I am totally not against Habitat, and it's not a matter of it being in my backyard. However, I'm concerned about the whole aesthetic. I'm concerned about where it's going to be a homeowners association. Are there going to be fees for the homeowners that purchase these homes?
Yes.
And what would it be?
Yes, there will be fees. When we get closer to selling, we determine a budget based on costs of looking at what the homeowners association is responsible for this particular development. It would be a very, what we like to call a light-touch homeowners association because there aren't a lot of costs involved. And we do factor in the homeowners association cost when we look at our affordability formulas. And also, the lender looks at that. If we're the lender, or if the other lender that our homebuyers use USDA, which is a very favorable mortgage, they also look at that. So, affordability is maintained, and it is, does take into account the homeowners fee. And we're happy at the next meeting, or probably the meeting after that, we'll definitely submit homeowners documents. There'd be samples. They won't be exactly what we'd record because that would probably be a few years from now. And if there are any specific items that the zoning board requests as conditions, that's...
I've got a whole list.
Okay. We're ready for it.
I had one more question and then a comment. My other question was in the booklet where you got emails and notes and letters from abutters that you didn't want to read all? You said it was some sort of pamphlet that you each got?
It's online.
Okay. I was just curious as to how many were favorable and how many weren't.
Oh, we'd have to...
Just a ballpark? I mean, did you get a hundred people and sixty said...
I would say generally, they expressed concerns.
Okay. My other comment would...
Fair general statement?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Secretary? General, fair general statement? Yes.
Would you like letters in support?
Doesn't matter. That's why we're having the public hearing here, and we have the file for public inspection.
Oh, yeah. That's fine. My other comment would be that another time, you might want to put that whole map on the screen so everyone here can see it, and especially when the gentleman was using the laser, because it's really just facing you and not us.
Actually, I don't want you to turn it so the audience can see it because we have our individual copies in the package.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. I'm going to open it up. Is there anybody else in support? Okay. We'll open it up. Wait. Somebody else in support?
Hi. Linda Sebula. I live in Harwich, and I also work on Habitat job sites. I'm, actually, it's pretty impressive that Oak Street is still standing, as is Gomes Way because I hammered at those places. But I'd like to call your attention to hope that you will look at the housing production plan, which has just been authorized by the Board of Selectmen. And I was part of that working group. And all of the statistics that you need, that Mr. Wastek was mentioning, people moving off Cape, the lack of affordability, and I hope that you look at that because there's a, it's, it's pretty serious in terms of the need for affordable housing, rental housing, homeownership. So, I hope that you will take a look at that as further information as to the needs for this type of project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody that is opposed to this...
How about half and half?
...application? Okay? Come forward, please.
First, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving us the opportunity to speak up, members of the board.
Identify yourselves, sir, please.
Lou Urbano. I'm from Harwich.
And your address, street address?
I'm on Riverside Drive.
Thank you.
There's a couple of areas of concern. None of them have to do with the residents, with the project of six. They have to do more in general with environment, and with some of the things that we saw when we read the application. And it seems that the traffic studies that were done are fine, if you look at traffic counts and cars. But there is an issue that we have to be concerned with. In the summer, on twenty-eight, from the Dennis Line, all the way to the church, the Baptist Church, traffic backs up and stops. So, maybe a light might be necessary or something, because good projects can have problems that need to be fixed, and people should bring those up. So, that's, that's something that this, that's not going to be in the numbers. That's one of the problems. That's just something, unless you drive it, you don't know. And it's just not, it's stopped. That means you wait four to five lights before you finally get to the Dennis Line. The other is something I heard tonight, and I wasn't going to talk about it because I promised Dawn that I would be in agreement with the project when we first started because the historical house, the Chase House, was going to be protected. But then, the town is, all of us are going to town meeting, I hope, coming in May. And we're going to be faced with a thirty million dollar proposition because of the nitrogen load, and because of a court filing that was filed by some Boston firm and a judge's ruling. And yet I heard tonight that my Title V doesn't emit much nitrogen. I'm hoping that that presentation is given to the town before we vote on thirty million dollars, and whether we spend or not. Because the West Harwich area, that stretch of area, is in a area of pollution. It's an area of high concern. The Herring River is polluted. You're absolutely correct. There is a plume that flows into it. And right now, we don't know where the plume is because the town refused to spend money to drill again. It's best to leave things underground. So, we don't know where the plume is. That's there. We add six units? That could be fine. You know, it's going to take twenty years. You're probably right because I think it moves at one foot per year through the sand. I think there's some statistics, and it's about a thousand feet away. I, I don't remember exactly what the flow is, but I sat in on quite a few meetings of that. It'll take time. But it'll get there. And what do I care? My kids will have to deal with it, not me. That's not a good attitude to take because I think we love this town, all of it. There are rules. I believe that Habitat has met the rules, the standards, as they apply the septic systems. I believe they probably met everyone. Why? Because they've done project after project after project, and they faced all that. So, that's not going to be an issue. But there's a judge's order on all the towns saying, "You've got a nitrogen problem." And, yeah, we filed a plan saying, "Hey, we're going to take care of it. We're going to put searing in East Harwich first, and then we're going to do this, and then we're going to do that." But I would like to see personally a letter from the judge saying that it's okay in a sensitive area to put four units on small lots a thousand foot from the Herring River. That only makes common sense to me. But we're dealing in laws, and I was once told common sense has nothing to do with it. It's what the statute states. But a letter would be nice, I will add. Also, I really have concerns about doing away... Also, I really have concerns about doing away with any historic restrictions on those homes. That was our first discussion, Dawn. That's why I committed to stay quiet. That's why I committed to support. But then I look at the application, it says facade. Facade, you're absolutely right, ma'am. I believe it was you that brought up that or this gentleman, that it's the whole building, not the inside but the outside, not just the facade work. That was our agreement, and I hope we stick to it. Those are the areas of concern, except to say one more thing, which is I hope that as more information is brought to this committee, that members of the community will be able to speak up as more information becomes known. That's all I have to say, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, we'll save your response until we get all the comments. You're making notes there. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ralph Diamond. I live at 103 Route 28. I bought the project on the east side, and this isn't easy for me because I've been a supporter of Hetch and Habitat for the, I've been in the same house for 34 years, and I've been a supporter of affordable housing, and I recognize the need for supportable housing, affordable housing. But I don't necessarily think that every site is the right site for it. Somebody was talking about lot size before and saying that the Bayberry Lane lots are 7,500 square feet, so why shouldn't we just have more small lots? Well, I really think that's a kind of a bad approach. We did away with 7,500 and 10,000 square foot lots a long time ago, and for good reason. Now, these lots are very small, 8,500 square feet. 8,700 square feet is a small lot. 9,500 square feet is a small lot. And given the fact that, and I just want to comment on the floodplain for a minute because it all interconnects, it was mentioned that part of this property is in the floodplain, and a couple of the septic systems are in the floodplain, maybe three, I'm not sure. But it wasn't mentioned that the entire parcel, except for a very small amount, is in what is known, what is classified as moderate flooding risk. Now, according to the FEMA, and according to FEMA and according to FloodSmart.gov, 20% of National Flood Insurance Program claims come from these moderate and low-risk areas, and 1/3 of federal disaster assistance for flooding comes in to these areas. So it's not a small matter that this site is in a moderate flooding risk area. I understand that, I understand that this design and the engineering is in compliance, will probably end up being shown to be in compliance, but I would, I would hope that perhaps we might want to mitigate any potential problems by reducing the number of houses. When this project was first put before the Board of Selectmen, it came in as four to six houses. And then, as the process continued, I, it was six houses, and then I asked, "Well, can you go ahead with four houses?" And it seemed like, it seemed like the four houses never really was a consideration. And, you know, so I would like to ask the question to the people proposing the project whether or not, in any way, shape, or form, you could see your way to making this a four-house project. And another, another issue that relates to that are the houses up front. Now, it's my understanding that, and this is what somebody from Hetch told me, that those houses are under agreement, and they're going to be used for multiple family, as multiple family dwellings, which I think is also nonconforming as well as the size of the lots. And I'd like to, I'd like somebody to address that. I was told they were going to be used for multifamily affordable units, and there would be a total of six units, I believe, four in the Chase House and two next door. And that would make 12 units altogether if this plan goes forward. And since originally, this plan, the plan was to sell the Chase House and the house next to it up front, and there was no, and there was nothing ever said of it being used as multiple family, but, you know, I expected some handyman to come in and buy that Chase House for, for a bargain and fix it up because that's, that would be the perfect use for it. Now, now we find out that it's going to be used as a multifamily housing, which is okay with me. A good friend of ours lives in that multifamily housing right now. It's, it's not a problem for me, but it does mean that there will be 10 units available. So I think that, you know, given the, you know, and I also take the gentleman's point about this not being a short-term risk, this flooding, but it is a long-term risk, and the, the length of mortgage is a 30-year proposition. There, you know, there's, anything could happen in the next 30 years. Why, why shouldn't we be a little conservative about what we do in areas that are designated moderate risk as well as in the floodplain? And maybe, maybe put our affordable housing into areas that are considered minimal risk because there are plenty of those in the town of Harwich. And I have a question. One of the questions was about the, the use of 93 and 97, and whether or not that is in fact supposed, going to be used for multifamily or whether it's not going to be used for multifamily. And, and does that, like, add, does that create more problems for you because it's nonconforming not only in size but also in number of units? And also, were perk tests done on every, for every unit? I guess I had addressed this to the engineer.
Well, we're going to hold all the comments.
Okay, all right. Because I, because I saw a backhoe in my, in, you know, next door to me digging up one area, but I didn't see him digging up any other areas. Maybe, maybe you don't need a backhoe to do a perk test. I don't know. But I just thought, I thought I'd ask that. And, you know, also, the, you know, having 15,000 square foot lots, I think, not only would it, not only would it be better for the environment, which is my primary concern, but I think it really would add to pride of ownership. Now, you know, some, I really think that living in a 9,000, in a house on a 9,000 square foot lot is, is different from living in a house on a 15,000 square foot lot. It could almost make the difference between somebody saying, "I can't wait to get to a bigger place with a bigger yard," or actually being long-term neighbors. We're not, you know, I'm looking forward to having a few neighbors, a few more neighbors. That would be fine with me. But I think six is just too many. And just one other little note here. I always love these diagrams because they're always in green, so they always make, it always makes it look like so, you know, inviting. But that diagram there, which shows, the, the one on the left, shows an awful lot of trees, and those trees are not going to be there anymore. And that's, you know, and he might, somebody might have gone out and flagged all the trees that they thought they might be able to save, but between trying to create an environment where you can have solar and also just making room for six houses and six new septic systems, I don't think there's going to be many trees left back there. So I would just encourage, I would encourage the board to maybe ask Habitat if they would consider a four-house project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Gail McElire, 103 Main Street, Route 28. We live right next door to the Judah Chase House. I just wanted to clarify, too. I, I know it's, quite a few people are aware of it, but a lot of times, you know, comments are made about how no one wants to live next to an affordable housing development or something like that. That's sort of the implication that is oftentimes made. Currently, the Judah Chase House is home for three families. It provides three affordable rentals for most of the time, and it's my understanding there's a garage unit that also provides an affordable rental, I believe, seasonally. On the other side, 93 Main is a duplex, which is currently, which currently provides housing, affordable rental homes for two families. And so we currently have full, when it's fully occupied, six affordable rentals live next door to us, and it's great. You know, I've, I've lived there for a number of years. Ralph has lived there for 34 years. We have friends that live next door, you know. They have a lovely backyard. Our friend next door has a little garden and a fire pit, and she has kids. They play in the backyard. It's a very large lot. It's a, it's a home. It's a home for families, affordable rentals for families. So, you know, that was our initial concern when we were talking, they were talking about tearing down the Judah Chase Home. You're going, I said, we, you know, we kept saying, "You're going to take away six affordable rentals to build six affordable homes." You know, where is the net gain there? So I just wanted to make sure. You know, we, we are very happy with our neighbors. We have no issue with affordable housing next door. That's not our concern. You know, there's a lot of environmental issues that have been brought up. I was so glad that the, the site control, as it's referred to, was brought up tonight because that's, that's, I've been scratching my head about that the whole time, going, you know, "Wait a second, how does that happen?" You know, all the 40Bs that I've ever been familiar with, you have one landowner owning a large piece of land, and they're able to create a, a small lot subdivision because they're going to do 25% affordable or at least 25% affordable and, you know, all the normal 40B laws. But this was such an odd deal where there was never going to be one owner owning the whole project, yet there was a 40B going in and creating two undersized lots out of the two properties in the front, seemed odd to me from the beginning. So I was so glad that that was brought up and it's going to be researched and addressed. I had another question about the flushing of the nitrogen from the Herring River and the loss of the eel grass that was mentioned earlier. And I, I believe I, I understood the gentleman from Downwind, Wonder, or Down, Down Cape, sorry. I'm thinking Plymouth, Plymouth Nuclear Plant at this point. Yes, Cape Downwinders, that's what it is. Plug for them. So the, you know, he, I think I understood him to say that there was already a significant amount of flushing because of the Bell's Neck marsh and all of that, and so therefore these six new septic systems shouldn't be an issue. However, even without these six new homes, with the density that's currently there, the septic systems that are currently there, and the flushing that's already been occurring for millennia, the eel grass is gone. So there's still a nitrogen issue even with the flushing. So now we're adding six, six new septic systems. I don't see how that marsh area and the flushing is going to mitigate additional septic systems when it can't even handle the septic systems that exist at this point in time. And I, I don't understand, I don't know septic systems. I'm not a health agent or a surveyor, but when he was talking about shallow septic systems and shallow leach fields because the groundwater is, is so high, actually, in that area because it is a flood zone, much of it, and the rest is in a moderate flood zone, and so it is at risk of flooding over time, especially with, they're projecting four-foot sea level rise in, not that, in our lifetimes, actually. And so if the, the leach fields are shallow and there is flooding, or, you know, would that increase the nitrogen release? Again, I don't know. That's a question. And, and I think Ralph had mentioned about Bayberry. You know, it's like the two wrongs don't make a right. If you've already got 7,500 square foot lots that were done way before 40,000 square foot zoning, you know, to make more just because that's the character of the neighborhood, it's only the character of that one little street. The rest of the neighborhood is pretty much 40,000 square foot lots with big, beautiful historic homes down Route 28 that we are trying to get some sort of historic designation for because, you know, it's, there's something like 26 captain's homes between the Dennis Border and the Herring River. And so it's, it's a treasure that we all are hoping to preserve and protect. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
I'm Sally Urbano, West Harwich. I live on Riverside Drive. And thank you all. This is my first live 40B process, and I'm finding it very interesting. Thank you. My comments are going to be just on the historic nature of things. The first to Hesh. And we were there with Mr. Sears at the very beginning at the demolition delay hearing. And my concern there is, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the barn was never brought up for demolition delay. We did talk about the house, but the barn itself is individually listed on the MACRS, which is the Massachusetts Cultural and Historic List, and that's available online. So there is a concern that, you know, if that's going to be demolished, that that might have to go back and, which adds further concerns for me as to why they want to be, have the waiver for all of the Historic Commission's guidelines. So that's a concern. The second concern with Hesh is that they went before the Board of Selectmen at the same time Habitat did a proposal for this project, and they received money from the Affordable Housing Fund. And the Selectmen were very interested in making sure that the Judah Chase House was protected and gave that money to Hesh for pre-development plans and for the historic restriction to be put on the Judah Chase House. I believe we heard from Dawn Howe recently that Hesh did that in-house. My concern is that kind of restriction is a legal document, and it is supposed to go through the Mass Historic Commission and be held by a legal entity. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. Those are my ones for Hesh. My ones for Habitat. Let me just read this. It's review and compliance about historic rules and regulations. And I'm going to preface this by reading to you right from the Massachusetts website about what I'm going to ask for. "These laws and regulations set up processes to ensure that government, government agencies look before they leap. They do not necessarily stop the government from acting, but they ensure that government actions are studied in consultation with interested parties and that proposed actions be modified if feasible so that public funds are not used in ways that cause needless destruction to our heritage. In short, they promote responsible and responsive government." So the two compliance reviews that I'm concerned about are the, well, the federal review. It's the 106 of the, of the National Historic Preservation Act, which says that any projects that require funding, licenses, or permits from federal agencies must be reviewed in compliance with that section. There's also a Massachusetts section that says, "Any new construction project or renovations to existing buildings that require funding, licenses, or permits from any state or federal government agency must be reviewed by the Massachusetts Historical Commission." And then the last one is the MIPA review, and I'm hoping that that will be done also. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to add one thing. First of all, I want to say that this is, I don't believe this is the worst project in, in the world. It's way better than what we were faced with before Habitat came in, and they wanted to put like 24, 28 units. And I, you know, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that the Judah Chase House is going to have a deed restriction to preserve its, its historical and architectural integrity. That's, that's really important to the neighborhood because West Harwich is starting to mobilize to really shine a light on the historic nature of that neighborhood. And, you know, this is something that's really important to us. As far as the, the density, I just wanted to read this one quick thing from Ed Dewitt at the Association for the Preservation of Cape Cod. Said, "APCC is concerned about onsite septic systems and floodplains. We have been working..." We have been working to update septic regulations to improve both water quality and public health. We recently completed a study with the U.S. Geological Survey on the impact of sea level rise on groundwater elevations." And then in bold print, "The number-one cause of septic system failure is groundwater inundation. As sea level rises, groundwater levels also rise, so there is a potential for failure without any warning." I just think we need to heed some of these, some of these warnings, even if we know they're not going to happen tomorrow or next year. A house is a long-term thing. It shouldn't, it shouldn't last just 10 years or 30 years, it should last 100 years, 200 years. So, let's, let's not, you know, placed, let's not place too many houses on a small amount of land in, in an area that's designated as moderate risk. Go for four.
This lady over here hasn't had a chance yet.
Hi, ma'am, Stuart, Pleasant Lake Ave. It seems to me as though the big elephant in this room here is water, freshwater and wastewater. And people have been talking around this whole topic all evening, but all, the whole Cape is faced with water shortages and cleaning up polluted ponds, bays, estuaries, and then, and the Herring River. So, that's, I just want to boil that down to the elephant in the room. I mean, yes, I think everybody wants to give a helping handout to people, families that are trying to work here and make their way on Cape Cod. But I wonder, what happens to housing that's already here? Why does it always have to be new construction? What about simple little ranch houses, 20, 30, 40 years old, that you could have a whole crew of volunteers come in and help those houses out, renovate them? That could be a Habitat project. Habitat used to start out with, starting with one house. I don't know about renovating, but I know it historically, they have done it in the past. And then I wanted to just point out one other thing, now that I've mentioned my water being the elephant in the room. This cul-de-sac, this street, it's very congested and there's a lot of houses there. Let's think about Super Bowl Sunday. What about if everybody there had, wanted to have friends over for Super Bowl? And pretty soon, you've got maybe the parents each have a car, maybe one of these kids is a teenager, they got a car, and then they all have their friends over and their friends are all, and all of a sudden, somebody has to call 911. You call 911, as far as I know, three big vehicles have to roll. You've got to have a police car, an ambulance, and a fire truck. How on earth are they going to get in and around there on a congested Super Bowl Sunday? That's just the point I want to make. I just don't think that that's, there's enough room for emergency vehicles to turn around and navigate in there. If you assume that there could be people parking on the street, not, everybody's going to fit in their little driveway. I just want to throw that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waystack?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of other quick points. People are talking about density in lots. Take a ride down Ocean Ave in Harwich Port. If you look at the lots down there, they're 5,000 square feet, and you talk about density, they're building the houses that go right to the lot line. Go down, especially to the end, right on the beach, and look at the two homes that there's not 10 feet between them. As for this particular community being the end-all of the issues dealing with Herring River, there are two lots that were sold on Riverside Drive this year, potential for three house lots on the river. On the other side of the river, there were two more lots sold, actually it was a three, it was a house and two other lots that are going to be developed. The difference between the two is the scale of price for those ones on the river that are probably going to have much more influence on the river than those that are 1,000 feet away or 2,000 feet away. But that doesn't come up when we have these discussions. These six homes are not going to be the demise of the Herring River. The Title V septic systems, they're according to code like people are putting in their houses every day. If you go to sell your house and your septic fails, you're going to put in the same system that's going into these homes. And those same septic systems will go in Riverside Drive where those three lots could be built, and on the other side of the river where those two lots were sold last year. So, this particular community is not going to be the death of the Herring River. It's not going to add so much nitrogen that's going to be the end-all. I think we have to be careful when we talk about affordable housing as it impacts other market-rate housing that's in the area that will actually be more detrimental to the river than this particular community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute, I want that gentleman, he hasn't had a chance yet, so come on up, sir.
My name is Danny Horn, 34 Smith Street in West Harwich. I just want to say, I have no ill will towards Habitat. I'm sure it's a great organization, they do good work, good things. My wife and I bought in West Harwich, where we bought because it has an old feel, we like the historic nature. You walk down 28, as others have said, it's a, it's a great, it's fabulous. What I can't get out of my mind is the verbiage of the facade facing the street of an old Western movie set with just posts on the back. We will cut everything else, but we'll leave the front. I'm glad to hear that that issue was raised, and I like the fact that you're at least sort of envisioning some kind of barrier, something to soften what may be in the back. Thank you.
Mr. Waystack has proven one thing tonight, we should all list our homes with Mr. Waystack when it's time. The question becomes though, those two lots that came here on Riverside Drive or on the ocean, next to the river, did they come in for a zoning exception? No? So, they were regular-sized lots, which, so that the septic systems have plenty of room to dissipate or whatever the word is, the nitrogen. I think that's the big difference is, we're talking about condensing versus what's there. That's the whole purpose of a 40B, is to change what is. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I just got to make a comment. I've heard all this wastewater, the, it's only going to get addressed through sewer ring, okay? That's why the town put out the Water Resources Book, it's going before the voters, and whether we want to pay the money or not, we're going to either okay it with the town or we're going to have to put in individual systems. So, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying and I share the concern, but it's not going to be resolved through dealing with affordable housing or market-rate housing, whether it's a 40B or a regular sale and purchase. It's going to be dealt with sewer ring, and that's a fact of life on Cape Cod. And not just Cape Cod. We came here from New Jersey and they were soured years and years ago because there were just too many people to do anything differently. And I, I don't want to pay the money any more than anybody out here, but there's no other solution. We got the lawsuit, we got the judge's order, and the town has come up with a scheme that's subject to voter approval, but I think it was in last week's paper I saw it, the Selectmen asked, I guess, the consultant, what happens if the town doesn't vote the money? And they said, "Well, every homeowner is going to have to put in a system that's going to run 20, 25 grand to install it, and it's going to run about $2,500 a year to maintain it." So, you know, I don't want to speak for Habitat, but I just, I've heard all of these comments and, you know, the elephant in the room is, "Yeah, we got to sewer, folks. We're going to have to sewer." There is no other way to deal with the septic waste coming out of the houses on Cape Cod, Massachusetts. Ma'am? Yes?
This is my first CBA hearing, and I find it very interesting. A couple of comments just from what people have said. I believe it was Ralph that mentioned that, about all the vacant houses, and I totally agree with that. Why can't Habitat take over some of those and refurbish them with volunteers and workers to, to make housing for people that need it? And the other thing was Mr. Waystack was talking about the Grove down on Ocean Street in Harwich Port. That's been there for 75 years. Those lots, that's what, that's what was done back then, the little cottage colonies. This is, this is talking about making a one-and-a-half acre property or whatever it is into six new homes that are the size all but, that's done at the cottage colony in Harwich Port. That's what all we're saying, is I think six is too many. I could see three or four, give kids a yard to play in, people could have a garden. I mean, I don't want to look at my next-door neighbor shaving, but, because in some instances, that's how close these houses are going to be, and I just think that that should be something to be considered. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make one more comment. You know, that's why I read the introductory remarks about 40B. A lot of your comments, you've got an issue with 40B, that's not within our jurisdictions of board. We have to live with those requirements that I set out at the beginning and based on, you know, local concern consistent with local needs. So, I appreciate all the comments, but those comments are really directed to the law itself and its past. I mean, we can't change it, we have to live within the statute and the regulations. Yes, ma'am? Now, I'd like, it's getting late, so unless you have something new to add rather than just going over the same points, we've heard pretty much every point, I think, but if you've got a new point, make it.
I was just going to respond to you talking about the sewer ring project. We heard recently from one of the Selectmen that it's potential, it looks like West Harwich more than likely wouldn't be soured for maybe 20 years. We were on one of the last legs of the, if it passes.
The plan's got it in stages.
In stages, yes. And so, I think we're 20 years down the line or so, so it's a ways, yes. You know, it does look like that's the most logical solution, but it's not one that's going to help the issue environmentally in West Harwich for quite a long time. And I understand what you're saying, yes, the 40B law says, it pretty much gives people almost carte blanche to ignore zoning if they can, you know, have enough room to put in a house and a septic system. However, I think as Sally Redd and other people have mentioned this evening, except if it, there's issues, environmental issues and health and safety issues that are, that town money, especially like almost $600,000 of town taxpayer money, as I understand, is being spent towards this project, that the health and safety of, and of the environment is, is come, does come into play and is a factor in the decision-making processes, I understand it. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more public comments? All right, I'm going to ask the applicant to respond if they're ready to do so to the various questions and comments, or we can defer to the next meeting?
I think we'll reserve our comments at this time.
You'll defer?
Yes, to the next meeting. I don't think it's served a great deal.
Okay, the only, I'm going to make just one more reference back to the 40B and the regs. And I admit, I read the whole thing fairly quickly, but one of the keys is here, consistent with local needs, we cannot put on this project anything that's going to be more onerous that we don't put on non-affordable housing. Okay? And I've heard a lot of concerns, but you need science. These people have studies, it's part of the application. If you have science to counter that or engineering reports, you need to bring them forward. A lot of concerns and what might happen, understand and appreciate that, but these people have submitted an application. We have an issue with the application itself, but they've met Title V standards on the septic, and as a board, we can't impose anything greater than that on them. So, you just, you folks need to understand that. I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing to Thursday, March 23rd, 7:00 p.m. Second. Dean? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned. Well, not adjourned, but continued.
Continued.
Thank you all.
Thank you.